I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that our cellphones are turned off and are on the vibrate position, and please be advised that our city council meetings are broadcast on TV on Channel Comcast Channel 99 and rebroadcast on WMDJ radio. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles.
Here.
President Williams is absent today, and our meeting is being chaired by Councilwoman Toles. Councilman Worthy.
Here.
Eccles.
Here.
Billingsley.
Here.
Councilman Cannon is also absent today. Councilman Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum present, and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask everyone to stand for the invocation, and Brian Harbison will lead us. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Almighty God, we thank you for the help you've given us. We thank you for the opportunity to gather in a free setting such as this. And God, we just pray that you will just anoint the council today with your wisdom, and God, with the very important decisions that they'll be making. God, and as we look forward to this weekend and a time of celebration for the risen Son Jesus, we just pray, God, that as we come together with our family and friends, that you'll just bless our weekend together in this time of celebration, and let us remember who we're here and who we're serving. We love you and thank you for your blessings, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the following meetings that were held on March 15th. Subcommittee on Poverty, Public Works Committee, Work Sessions, City Council, Finance Committee. Clerk?
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of March 11 through the 17. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Second.
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Mayor, are there any proclamations?
No ma'am.
Unfinished business, we have none. This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition or to or in favor of resolution or an abatement of nuisance on property located at 129 Washington Avenue in District 1, the estate of Carey Bangston Alexander, being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor?
Madam President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We started this case in December of 2014. There have been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution of abatement of nuisance on property at 1109 Hurst Street in District 3, FNA NPLLC, with the possible rights of redemption of the estate of Henrietta Mall, being the last known owner. Is there anyone to speak in opposition of this resolution? Is there anyone to speak in favor?
Madam President, we started this case in November 2014 with no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Move to abate. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution or an abatement of nuisance on property at 1506 Tuscaloosa Avenue, District 3, Gary Henry and wife Joan Henry being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this resolution?
Madam President, based on recent improvements, we're asking that this case be table for 30 days. Thank you.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Going along with the Building Department, Brian Harbison, I want to ask to abate, not, excuse me, not to abate, but to give a 30-day table.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
Our next resolution is, our next public hearing is a resolution or an abatement of nuisance on property at 1508 Tuscaloosa Avenue in District 3, Carol Frances Jordan and Carol Jordan Dotter being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition? Is there anyone to speak in favor?
Madam President, we started this case in May of 2015 with no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution or an abatement of nuisance on property at 537 Valley Street in District 3, Deborah Beverly, being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone like to speak in favor?
Madam President, this case involves a burned house. We started the process in November of 2014. There was a demolition permit taken out by the owner in March of 2015, but no work has been done, no improvements, and we're asking for a resolution today to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution or an abatement of nuisance on property at 539 Valley Street in District 3, Deborah Beverly is being the last known owner. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Madam President, we started this case in November of 2014. There have been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I would just like to say, the city doesn't want the property. If we abate the property and we knock the property down, you can make payments. It's a three-year payment plan. All you do is get with the Building Department with Brian Harbison, and you can keep the property. We don't want the property. I just wanted to say that. I say that all the time, but I want to keep saying it. Thank you.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution abating nuisance on property at 2310 Hills Avenue in District 6, Billy R. Gray and Margarita D. Gray and First Charge Funding being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition? Is there want anyone to speak in favor?
Madam President, we started this case in March of 2015 with no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
We have items 16 through 21, and this, our next public hearings are resolutions assessing a nuisance abatement against, liens against property. This is where demolition has already been done, and we have six locations. I'll read their addresses and the names. We have 511 Hope Street, District 1, in the amount of $3,031.40, and this is the state of Alabama, and the estate of Velma Downey, AKA Velma Epc. We have 1503 Paradise Avenue, District 1, $3,556.40, and this is the state of Alabama, and Sandra Diane Hauser, Montgomery, and Etina Finance Company. 119 Park Street, District 1, $3,811.40, and this is Vicki Desiree Tuck, care of Lorenzo Thomas. 712 Knuckle Street, District 2, $3,606.40, and this is Christie Butler Reed, an Alabama Housing Finance Authority. Number 19, Sandusky Lane, District 6, $2,756.40, this is Robert S. Jones, and number 20, Sandusky Lane, District 6, $3,656.40, and this is state of Alabama, and Connie Tucker. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to any of these resolutions? You give her your name and address.
Madam President, I am attorney for Christie Butler Reed. My name's Dave Blunt, and we'd like to object to the resolution number 19 at 712 Knuckle Ms. Reed, I'll make a couple points. Ms. Reed was not notified properly back when the house, when a nuisance was determined, when the house was demolished, she was never noted, and she never received any notification, either by mail or personal service, as per the statute. In the statute, Section 86, it says that the person that's the registered owner of the house, or that's on record with the tax collector's office, should be notified either personally or by U.S. mail. Ms. Reed was never notified. On contacting the city after learning just this past February that the house had been demolished, she was told that all the notices were mailed to 712 Knuckle Street, but Ms. Reed, in fact, had moved from that property in late 2014. It was vacant. She was working on trying to get the repair to some fire damage to one structure on the property, and had changed her address with, for the tax purposes of that house, to her new residence back in late 2014. She also made a change of address with all her creditors and everybody that sends her mail, including the U.S. Postal Service. In addition, there were, there were two structures on that property. While one was certainly, had fire damage and probably would qualify as a nuisance building, the other structure on that property had no damage, was a safe building, was structurally sound, and, and had a lot of stuff stored in it, and that, that building was also demolished and should not have been, in our opinion. Lastly, there was quite a few things of expense that were installed in that, that other building that, that we feel should not have been demolished and should not have been deemed a nuisance, that was worth quite a bit of money. There was some antique furniture and some very collectible toy collections in, in that building that's worth, you know, more than what the cost of, of this lien would be, frankly. And we don't, we'd like to know, you know, what happened to that stuff, if it was, if it was subtracted from the cost, or if that, that, those materials were salvaged anyway or sold. So we're asking that, that the city not pass a resolution to place a lien on this property at this time.
We have another opposition.
Good evening.
My name is Vicki Dorisa Tuck Thomas, and I'm here concerning 119 Park Street, East My father called me one day and said, "Well, Big Mama's house is gone." And I said, "They torn it down?" And he said, "Yeah, come up here, it's, everything is cleared away." Well, I was here last year, my father and myself, and we went through this, and I remember stating that I had no use of the property, how bad the property was, how drug dealers and drug addicts was living inside the old house, and I was asked if I would be willing to get the deeds over, and I stated that I would. I received a letter after the house had been torn down, telling me the price that I owe, and I in return wrote a letter to Ms. Nelson, stating that I am on disability, I had agreed to get the deeds over to the city, and I did not have these funds to pay for tearing the house down. So today, I have the deeds of the house, all of the paperwork, and whatever I need to do from here, as far as, I don't have any more paperwork. I have it all right here, I've kept it for years, and I'm willing to turn this over to the city. I heard him say early, "We don't want the property," but I have no use for the property, and I'm not able to build anything on those grounds ever again because of my disability.
Madam President, if I may respond, I did receive your letter. We do have a review process where we get various city departments to review requests like that. I did go back, and the original public hearing, I confirmed that the minutes did indicate that you were willing to deed the property to the city. I've not been able to get the paperwork to our city attorney yet. The building official and a couple of other departments have reviewed it for me, but we always have the city attorney to check out the property before we present it to the council, you know, to be accepted. The council would have to vote to accept the property before we get you to sign a deed or anything, and so that's kind of where we are at this point.
Okay.
Sort of about halfway through the process.
All right, thank you.
All right. Do I need to...
If you don't mind, maybe show your paperwork to our city attorney after the meeting.
Okay.
Because he will be getting the paperwork regarding your offer any time now.
Okay. Thank you.
I've not spoken with a council member, it's actually Ms. Toles' district. Yes, I did receive favorable recommendations from building and engineering and community development.
Yeah, it's just gonna be a lien on the property, it's not like we're trying, it's not like we're telling you to pay, it's just a lien on the property, and so what'll happen is, you know, we've already checked title to the property, and so if we get favorable recommendation from clerk's office, that everything, that everybody's approved of it, then we'll have you sign a deed, and that'll be it.
Okay. Thank you all.
I appreciate the progress.
All right, thank you.
If I may on, if I may on properties on 712 Knuckle Street and on properties on 119 Park Street, I would like for those to be considered next, well, at our next council meeting, but we, but I'd like for us to vote on number 17, 20, and 21.
Okay, so the ones that we had people speak, you want to remove those?
16, 17, 20, 21.
Okay.
I'd like for us to consider those, and the other, other two, we will, we will table until next week.
Okay.
Second.
All righty. Do you want to deal with a motion to table first?
Yes.
The two?
Yes, I need a motion that we will table number 18 and number 19 for...
So moved.
Okay.
Those in favor, to table items number 18 and 19 for seven days or one week, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for one week.
We have items 16, we have item 17, and we have item 20 and 21 to consider for today.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any discussions? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt all four resolutions, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt the remaining four resolutions.
Resolution authorizing preliminary engineering agreement with the Alabama Department of Transportation, and this is for the fiscal year 2021. This is a project for a bridge replacement on George Wallace Drive over Nolan Branch, and the total estimated cost is $150,090.60 with an 80/20 cost share. The federal portion is estimated to be of $126,842.48, and the city's portion is The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Resolution authorizing easement to the Alabama Power Company, and this is allowing the power company to replace a COVID at Delilah Road. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any new business?
If I can remember which one I have, I have one. Is this a bailer?
No.
Annexation.
Reappointing?
No, it's annexation, Bob.
Annexation.
Okay, I got it. I asked for unanimous consent to do this today, under new business. It's an ordinance assending to annexation of property lot 3, Block 2, in the Keeling subdivision.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to consider the ordinance today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent for consideration.
Move to adopt. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Are there any more new business?
Yes, Madam President, it sounds pretty good.
It sure does.
It's a request from the mayor's office, asks for unanimous consent on a resolution appointing and reappointing members of the Gaston Commercial Development Authority.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move for adoption, please.
Second.
Are there any discussion?
Yes, I'm, uh, go ahead, I'm sorry, ma'am. I was just gonna give the names.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, uh, Carver Boardton is replacing Debrick Williams for a term ending on December 31st of 2018, and Tony Smith is replacing Ralph Lane for a term ending on December 31st, 2016, and Keith Lyles is replacing Jeffrey Kim Gibb for a term ending on December 31st, 2017.
Go ahead, you got the reappointments of three, two up top.
Okay, yeah. The reappointments by the mayors are Julius Rawls, Harry McGlyndon, and Carolyn Parker, and they, uh, terms expire on December 31st, 2018.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Are there any more new business?
Yes, Madam President, I have asked for unanimous consent to hear a resolution authorizing the purchase of a bailer and a harper from Marathon Recycling.
Here today. Second.
Any discussion?
That is a, we got a grant, you know, once we got our building, we've been able to get some grants, and this is another grant that we got. Business is good at the recycling center. We'd like for everybody to try to use it, and with this here, this will help compact everything and, and get it out pretty good, so we hope to have some more trailer spread around in municipalities, in the county too, where we can go get them and haul it back over here to us, so we appreciate everybody trying to stay with us on recycling.
Move for adoption.
We need, still need to get the vote for unanimous consent for today. Those in favor, to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted to consider.
Now move for adoption.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
We now have, are there any department reports, committee, board reports? Remarks by the council, starting with you, Mayor.
I don't have anything.
Councilman Worthy.
I don't have anything.
Councilman Billingsley.
Yes, I'd like to say, during our pre-council meeting, we had a lively discussion up there today about certain things going on in the city, and, and I appreciate the people that
today about certain things going on in the city, and, and I appreciate the people that came and spoke about those things because those are things that concern all of us, especially our unruly young people and older people. I, I just wish people would know where their children are and have them in hand and, and keep them at home if you don't, if you can't supervise them, because let me tell you something, the policeman, he will supervise them if necessary. So just, just make sure you do what you're supposed to do as far as keeping up with your children, and that's all I have.
All right, everything.
Due to Good Friday holiday, Thursday's garbage rite will be collected on Wednesday and Friday, and rite will be collected on Thursday. If there's nothing else, do I hear a motion for adjournment?
Yes.
Good job. Get out of here early.